That was the little lady that Susan wanted to hear last. So according to our bylaws, the Chair is Chair until the reorg. So I'm Chair for until we have a vote, which I'm going to turn it over to Karen to do the vote. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. And then we'll do The oaths. And then we'll do a roll and then we'll do the other stuff. All right, so. This meeting is called, I'm sorry, this is the Tuesday, January tenth, two thousand twenty-three, type on the agenda. A reorganization meeting of the Flemington Borough Planning Board. Meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. Both adequate and electronic notice of this meeting has been provided by way of publication in the Hundred and Counting Democrat Newspaper Honor about August fourth, two thousand twenty-two. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted on the door of the Borough Flemington Municipal Building located at thirty-eight Park Avenue. And any handicapped access entrance is there too. Posted on the municipal website, provided to the municipal clerk and distributors, all persons, if any requesting copies of same. This meeting is being recorded with both audio and video and maybe rebroadcast. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times.
Okay, so what we're going to do now is we're going to take the oaths.
Well, I was gonna do the oaths, then the roll, then the flag. That's okay.
So we're going to take the oaths of the remaining three people that have not yet been sworn in. That is Mayor Carroll, Councilwoman Engelhardt, and Karen Giffen. Each have in front of you the oath. So if you would start, I say your name and then continue through, so I don't have to walk you through it.
Did Jim have to do it also?
Uh, Jim. I thought Jim was, I've already done it.
Simon prior, yes.
Yeah, I was trying to. Jim, I've already done it.
Yeah.
And Mike?
Yeah. And Mike. Uh, everybody else.
James, Mike, James Hill, and Mike Campion will all start in.
They did, just these three. Alright, so I state your name and three of you keep going.
Hi, Susan Engelhardt.
I swear.
For I'm from North Carolina.
Constitution.
Well, and then I was.
I'm a county senator, I knew you were going to be.
That I wear a true faith religion, I'm the same.
And the government's down, and they need to stay in this state, and you're forty people.
Unfortunately.
Actually, I'm just.
For June, for the office.
Planning.
That's my.
Planical member.
As part, according to the best plan, God.
Thank you all. I think next time I'll walk you through it. I thought that might be easier. I have. Right, sign your Oaths. And now we should. Mayor Carroll. Councilwoman Engelhardt. Here. Campion.
Here.
Dasha.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Levitt.
Here.
Ms. Giffen.
Here.
Ms. Weitzman.
Here.
Mr. Hill.
Here.
Mr. Shob.
Here.
Mr. Echo.
Here.
Tryna Zinski here. Uh, Mr. Carco.
Here.
Mr. Gattis.
Here.
Mr. Struck.
You missed the couple.
Uh, Mr. Weintraub, Mr. Mr. Weintraub.
Here.
And Mr. Samina.
Here.
Mr. Trump is excused. Yep. Okay. Okay, so now in order to start the year, we need to do nominations for Chair.
We should.
Let's try it. Yep.
Legislation.
United States of America.
One nomination.
I need a motion to open nomination to the Chair.
I move nomination to the open.
My second.
Uh, I need a motion to appoint someone as nominate someone for Chair.
I nominate Karen Giffen for Chair.
Second.
Who is the second?
Jane Weintraub.
Second.
Yeah, everyone can put Their name to the the first and second for me. A lot of new bases and new Voices that I I I cannot particularly capture. And so we have Karen, we have a motion by Mayor Carroll for Karen. We have a second by Mr. Weintraub. Karen, do you accept the nomination?
You're not going to say who has checked the vote.
I select to gash. Okay. Um, any additional nominations?
I nominate Jeff Dawson as Chair.
Weitzman's second.
Mr. Dawson, do you accept?
Yes.
Any other nominations? Uh, so we're going to first vote for Karen as Mayor. Then. She's. She's. Sorry about that. Uh, Karen Giffen as Chair. Uh, Mayor Carroll.
Uh, yes.
Uh, Councilwoman Engelhardt?
No.
Uh, Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
No.
Mr. Cook?
No.
Mr. Levitt?
No.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
No.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Shob?
No.
Well, we're, it's only.
Okay, sorry. It's the A and I correct.
All's not so.
So it says on the bill.
Bylaws is they participate, but it's a non-member board.
Correct. Um. Okay, so that vote was five noes or yeses?
Correct.
Moving on to Mr. Dawson, Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Councilwoman Engelhardt?
I'm, I'm sorry.
You're voting for whether.
Now we're voting for Dawson's Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
No.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
No.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to two. So.
Thank you all.
Chair, I pass it over to you.
Thank you. I'll save my remarks for the next thing on the agenda. Um. Item number three on our agenda is a nomination for Vice Chairperson.
I nominate, oh, Mayor, I mean, I nominate Trent Levitt as Vice Chair.
Weitzman's second.
I nominate.
Trent, Trent, you said I do.
Thanks.
Alright, I'd like to nominate Karen Giffen as Vice Chair.
Second.
The second was?
Weintraub.
Uh, do you accept, Kim?
I do.
Any other nominations? There's been none. We're gonna vote on, we're gonna close nominations and move to, who was first? Who's right?
Uh, Trent Levitt.
Okay, hold on please.
Mayor Carroll?
No.
Mrs. Engelhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
No.
Mr. Hill?
Yeah.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Okay, that is. Six to three.
Do we, do we have to do the other vote then? No. Alright. Congratulations, Trent.
Thank you.
Alright. Um. Alright, item four on our agenda is opportunity for Chair remarks. I do have Just a few things I wanted to To say. Um. I want to thank my fellow board members for their support and allowing me to continue to serve as Chair of the Board. Um, it is an honor and privilege to continue to volunteer for This town that my family has called home for over a quarter century. Um, I do want to welcome our new and returning board members. Um, and for those who are new to our planning board, uh, they'll quickly say that we're People committed to serving the public interest. Uh, in the last year, we had about a half dozen applications that had hearings. Um, we had some other informal inquiries where we were able to help applicants out. Uh, guiding through the process. I'm very happy Uh, that we were able to give council feedback on amendments to both the Union Hotel and Global Ag redevelopment plans. Uh, ordinances dealing with mundane things like parking garages, really important things like affordable housing. Um. Uh, as well as some rezoning in the north part of the downtown business district. Um, and I'm very happy that we were able to get our ordinances square for HPC to move forward with those served by local government program after Uh, one, two, three iterations back and forth, but it was, it was a good process to to get it right. I'm very happy to say that last year we were able to, um, after much delay and COVID and all the rest of it, Uh, finally get updates to our goals and objectives, land use and economic development elements of our Uh, comprehensive planning documents. Uh, it was a really big, important project that led me Uh, last year. Um, I know that we, there were elements that we did not, uh, take care of last year. Um. To me, updating our sustainability element is at the top of that list. Uh, given the unprecedented flooding, uh, that we've seen in Flemington in the recent years, um, this is an area that we need to address sooner than later and Um. Uh, spoke with Trent Levitt, our newly elected Vice Chairperson, and he's been working, um, uh, with, uh, a few of us on, uh, Trying to find ways to fund that and get that work done, uh, going forward. Um, the other, uh, thing that I wanted to point out Um, is, uh, Kind of welcoming back, uh, our, our council liaison in a different role, Susan Engelhardt, Um, who has served on this board for a long time and is no stranger to the way that the board works. Um, uh, and was a vital member of the subcommittee working on the master plan updates over the last several years. And I'm hopeful that the recommendations that were incorporated in that land use section and in the Economic Development Section, we can then turn into, uh, those, to the appropriate ordinances, uh, to update. Uh, I'd like for us to spend some time working on that, uh, this year. Um. As, as many of you know, in addition to being a dad and a college professor, I'm also a planner. Um, and, uh, I was reviewing for one of my classes the other day, the AICP Code of Ethics. Um, and, uh, It says, says first and foremost that our primary obligation as planners And active participants in the planning process is to serve the public interest. And the first section of this document, uh, Lays out aspirational principles that is not just for those of us who have a license, but for anyone who's involved in planning processes. Uh, whether it's planners, advisory board, Decision makers, basically all of us here who are on this board and, um, I'm going to email the documents to the board, uh, later. Um. Just so you can see where where I'm thinking, but I wanted, as we're starting a new year, um, if I could just to lay out These five broad aspiration principles, which I think are going to be important as we guide our work, uh, this year. Um. Number one is that people who participate in the planning process shall continuously pursue and faithfully serve the public interest. Number two, people who participate in the planning process shall do so with integrity. And amongst other things in this section, it includes respecting the rights of all persons and all groups. Do not discriminate or harass others. Number three, people who participate in the planning process shall work to achieve economic, social, and racial equity. Number four, people who participate in the planning process shall safeguard the public trust. And number five, practicing planners shall improve planning knowledge and increase public understanding of planning activities. And I know that this guides my work as a professional, but I hope That we can use these, this framework to guide our work, uh, as we go forward This year. And with that, Going to move on to the next item in our agenda, which is I believe, Mayor Comments, yes?
Thank you. I really have none tonight. Just a Happy New Year to everybody, and I look forward to studying your view.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Council?
Um, well, I got, um, almost the same. Uh, Happy New Year to everybody. I am really honored that my fellow councilman, um, Voted me, uh, as liaison. I Really would miss you guys, otherwise. Um, I have a couple, and I want to welcome all of the new members. I want to welcome back all of the existing members. Um, and I'm really excited about kind of getting this year started and continuing the good work that we did last year. Um, there were two items on last night's agenda, on the council agenda that relate to Uh, planning, so I'll just mention them very quickly. Um, Aunt Mary's, which is actually on our agenda to review their resolution. Um, as well as, um, uh, Perhaps another site in the future to be determined are both, um, Covered under the cannabis ordinance that we currently have. And during our work session, there was some discussion about adjusting that ordinance. Mainly nothing, not really having anything to do with the planning board was the fees was what was originally kind of started. And as we were all talking, um, there was a couple of questions that came up, and there were very similar questions to the things that we had discussed during our own deliberations here. Concerns about parking, loitering, traffic, that kind of thing. Um, and, um, so one of the things I had mentioned to the, to the council last night Was that, um, when we discussed all of that, um, we knew that every year they have to get renewed and reviewed. So that's an opportunity to review any type of Um, nuisance parking concerns, loitering, anything that the town is a concern with. That will be addressed. We is, we kind of reflected it with things like parking, but other things as well. Um, so that ordinance will be adjusted and Uh, eventually we'll review it and we'll probably see it in front of us just for some minor adjustments and then jump back, just like normally The ordinance go back and forth with us. Um, uh, because it It generally relates to some things with land use, didn't much. Um, the other thing we discussed was the flood management ordinance. Um, that's going to be on our agenda on, uh, January twenty-fourth, really similar to other stuff we have to do because of, um, this is the EDA is requiring this. DEP, DEP, sorry, DEP, thank you. Um, I was, I had something else on my mind. Sorry, I have money on my mind apparently. Um, sorry, the DEP. Um, and yes, it's, it's, uh, it's federal guidelines that have come down. We have to get them reviewed and We do the same thing. It starts in the council. We get second reading and we basically just are an advisory board. We make recommendations and then it goes back up to the council. So you will see that On the twenty-fourth of January. And that is on my council report for today.
Thank you. Item seven, uh, on our standing agenda is HPC comments. Um. Do we have, do we have something to add, Dennis?
Yeah, just like the, we have our reorg meeting tomorrow. Uh, Emily Hammer was appointed by the mayor, um, replacing Don Echol. And then Richard Giffen was reappointed to the HPC. Uh, Kim Tilly is the Borough Council Liaison, so she was reappointed. And then just say the date, we are planning a Flemington Historical House Tour, June third. Um, so please save the date. If anyone's interested in helping, we're going to need help. Um, but we're excited about that. It's going to be great for the town.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, guys. Um, item eight on our agenda is a period for public comments as we have in all of our meetings. Um, if members of the public wish to speak, um, if you're here Present, I'm going to start with folks who are present in the room, uh, please, uh, come to the microphone and identify Your name and address for the record, um, and then we'll go to folks who are on Zoom. So if any members of the public wish to speak, please, um, come forward. Lois, please.
Lois Stewart, Flemington Borough.
I say. Pardon?
I just.
I understand that that's not permitted.
We're not doing that.
I only have to say the municipality, and that's why I'm standing here.
Daniel's law, we're no longer requiring the address, just. But I thought that the planning board had to get addresses for dealing with the two hundred foot things and stuff like that.
Yes, well, if I have, if I have a problem with somebody doing something near me, you'll know about it.
Okay, so hold on, hold on one second. Let's just address this issue. Uh, Daniel's law has to do with a opportunity for certain groups of people. Um, specifically, we're dealing with Um, retired, uh, current retired judges, law enforcement officers, and prosecutors. Um, you have to register with the state in order to be exempt from and taken off of, uh, this particular piece of information. Um, so that really wouldn't apply here to anyone in particular unless they actually register and and are then subject to Daniel's law. With regard to the planning board, We have procedures where people do come here and have to indicate their name and address. We could, of course, change those procedures Down the road if we want to, but Daniel's law isn't specifically applicable unless you apply for that exemption, you're granted that exemption. Um, when it comes to requirements of the land use law. Um. When the board is entertaining discussion on pending hearings and applications, it becomes very important as to where that particular individual making a comment is located. So that's where the address particularly comes in the play. Um, but again, Daniel's law doesn't really apply unless you actually register and get granted that exemption.
So can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So then, based on our bylaws, we would have to continue the way we've, we've done, because the, I mean, it's, the bylaws are our.
It's actually in your Rules of Citizen义务. That's right, which is also adopted and which is also.
So we could choose to change that, kind of like public comment, for example, where it's not on an application.
Correct.
You can say the municipality.
Correct.
But I think from a, uh, an application perspective, We really need to know where, I, I mean, I, I get it, that it's, that exposing your address is never fun when, when there's, um, You know, people out there wishing you harm, but, um, But legally, Daniel's law doesn't apply, so Un- unless you're one of those classes.
Correct.
So we would have to, during an application, Name an address.
Yes, and the reason again being that The definition of interested party includes any one required of municipal land use law that does want to come speak on an application. However, the, the Uh, weight that the board members give to commentary of someone that lives, let's say, within two hundred feet as opposed to someone that, say, lives within five hundred feet or outside entirely. Uh, you have the ability to give certainty to, uh, the commentary by one person versus. So how is the law protecting this, the legislation from the state protecting People who Are interested parties who also require protection? Meaning? A judge who doesn't like their next neighbor's addition to their house and wants to comment. So, so Daniel's law really, it protects from overrelated items as well? So if somebody wants to come here, if someone wants to say that, well, I'm part of that interested party, so I do not wish to provide my address. That they certainly can do that, and then the board can make that indication that that's, the law itself doesn't protect them. Now, I do know it's going to be, or there is proposals for it to be extended to, um, governmental officials as well, that we're not there yet.
Address, I think, is the answer to a very long conversation.
If you want to take me to court, then take me to court. You all know where I live. So it's just a way of forcing. And I resent that because I'm eighty-eight years old. I don't want somebody throwing rotten tomatoes at my house because they know where I live or something. As, as Todd Cook said, to protect yourself, I refuse to give you my street address anymore. You can find out if it's Uh, appropriate to comment on a Application by asking the question, do you live within two hundred feet of the, of the, uh, site in question? And then I would answer yes or no. You do not have to have my address on that street To continue with the, um, work that you are required to do. So I will not give you my street address anymore. And if you want to make a big thing about.
No, we're not going to make a thing about it. We're gonna, we're gonna, you, you've got your time to, is this? Make, please make your comment.
Well, I'm hoping my comments, and I want you to change your procedures So that you find out the information that you need to know without asking me specifically My street address or anybody else's street address with all the controversies That are occurring in this town and all the nasty things that are being said On, uh, social media. I wouldn't think anybody would want to tell their street address. And I think that you people need to take that into consideration and find another way To find out the information that you need without putting somebody's well-being or the Well-being of their property in jeopardy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members in the public wish to speak? Oh. Name an address, please.
My, my name is Jay Hoff. I live at sixty-one Line Street, although Uh, that is known to people, uh, in town, considering that, um, one of the nominees from this year actually decided to publish that on Facebook. Um, and I'm just quite concerned tonight. Um. And I have been aware that James Weintraub has been nominated for a position on planning council, and I have some concerns about that. Um, I have shared my concerns with several community members, and they have also brought his comments online to my attention as well. Um, he is personally attached to me. He is attached to others in this committee online. And it does not reflect well on the council, uh, particularly Ms. Carroll, um, as the person who nominated him for this position. Uh, you have made comments saying that you would like to include the entire community, that you would like to build a community for all of us. But your words aren't matching your actions in this nomination. Um, he is, you know, called people things from asshole to, uh, men in dresses. He, uh, has really gone across the board with What he has to say about people that he doesn't like or disagrees with. And regardless of whether you are aware, it's not on social media, since I'm aware that you do not personally partake in social media, you are aware now. Um, and you are capable for vetting the candidates that you put into positions of authority. Um, and I would like you To reconsider Your nomination. I understand that he's already been sworn in, um, and that perhaps there are certain things that prevent you from, you know, taking this position from him, but I would like these concerns noted, and I think that it does not reflect well in our community for someone like Weintraub to be in a position of authority. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak?
Hi. Um, my name is Marie Boshi, uh, twenty-one North Main Street. Um, I'm also here to voice my concerns about the appointment of Mr. Weintraub. Um. I'm personally not someone who gets on Facebook or social media and participates in whatever it's going on, but Um, I've been made aware of some of his comments on, on social media, and I personally found them despicable. Um, childish and, um, Just not of the integrity that one would hope that someone in a position to shape the future of the town would have. Um. And, uh, I would just like you to possibly reconsider and to think about, you know, I think Fleming can do, but can do better. Um, I'd like to see someone who can really uplift the entire community and not resort to Having swabbling and main calling and, um, particularly the, the anti LGBTQ sentiment that he expressed, I think is just Really unacceptable in this day and age. Um, and that's what I came here today to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Other members of the public wish to speak?
I, I'd really like to get a chance to talk about this mischaracterization of me, but I'll, I'll leave it alone for the public comments.
All the comments, you can't talk right now. This is public comment.
Hi, my name's Elliot Franklin. I no longer live in the borough, but I used to live in the house on fifty-one Mine Street With, uh, Jay over there. Currently live in Delaware Township. I will not share my address because I am worried about Maybe not James himself, but we've seen Over the past, I don't know, five years Where One idiot with a platform inspires a bunch of other idiots to fake guns To innocent people, and I'm frankly tired of that. I think the comments that Mr. Weintraub made about Your former mayor, uh, who is an intersex lesbian, were frankly atrocious and disgusting, especially for someone who intended on Running for public office. Um. I think that The public voted and Mr. Weintraub saw the results of that voting, that Flemington doesn't want him In any kind of position of leadership. And I think you need to think long and hard about why you made this choice, Ms. Carroll, um, and what that says to your constituents. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members in the room wish to speak? Is there anybody, um, attending on Zoom? Uh, please click on raise hand and, uh, we'll allow you to speak if you, if you'd like. Yeah, I'm not seeing anyone on Zoom, so we'll move on to Item nine on our agenda, which is, uh, Planning Board Resolution two thousand twenty-three oh one, um, which is the Open Public Meetings Act, and it's also Including, um, our, uh, dates of meeting. For those who are continuing on the board, I didn't want to point out one difference from The, uh, set of dates that were circulated, um, at the end of last year. I didn't want to point out one difference from the uh set of dates that were circulated um at the end of last year. Council moved its April tenth meeting to April eleventh, which would normally be our planning board meeting because that's the day after Easter. And so um we are gonna have, instead of us meeting on the eleventh, which was on the draft that was circulated at the end of last year. Um, I'd like for us to move that meeting to the eighteenth, which is the week after. So we have a meeting on uh, right, is it the eighteenth?
Yes.
Eighteenth and then.
Eighteenth and then.
And the twenty-fifth would be our two meetings in April. So that's, that is the only difference from the draft that was circulated in December. Um.
There are two other um conflicts that would have been already discussed in the prior year, but for the new members, um. You know, generally we meet on the second and fourth Tuesday. Um, the same kind of situation happened in September and October with um some holidays where the council. Beats on Mondays, the holidays on Mondays, so they move it to Tuesday, so we move those dates as well.
Right, so so can I get a motion in a second on uh three three oh one?
No move.
Martin.
Second cook. I mean, I'm sorry, any further discussion?
And I just, just from from a board classification or edification perspective, can you just list the last four meetings of the year? Just so we're clear.
The last four meetings is November fourteenth, November twenty-eighth, December twelfth, and December nineteenth.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, um. We usually put two December meetings. We never meet in between Christmas and end of years. Generally, that since I've been here. Can't say never.
Yeah, we try to, we try to.
I just, again, you said we're going back to back, the eighteenth and the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, in April.
In in May, yeah.
Yeah, we checked with my country. There didn't seem to be a conflict on any other borough.
That's that's fine.
Only if I had to pass over that week, right?
Well, we could have moved it to the fourth, but it's like, it's.
Yeah.
It would, it wouldn't have been great.
Right.
First books.
Yeah, I I.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Engelhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Champion?
Yes.
Mr. Dasha?
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Whitesman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, item ten on the agenda, Resolution PV two thousand twenty-three dash oh two, which is appointments for professional services. Um, so that is for uh Kara Kaczynski as attorney Beth McVanis of the firm, Bob McVanis, as boards. Planning consultant Bob Clerco of of a fleet for engineering, uh as the engineer and Jay Troutman of.
McDonald and Ray.
McDonald and Ray uh is our transportation.
Well, Kara Kaczynski of M Y K, L L C. We also have uh usually appoint John Hatch.
Yep.
Um, as the historic architect for the uh H B C of Barkin and Hens.
So move cook.
Engelhardt seconds.
Any other discussion? I mean.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Engelhardt?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Champion?
Yes.
Mr. Dasha?
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Whitesman?
Yes.
Item eleven on the agenda, Resolution twenty-three dash oh three, um appointing Eileen as our board secretary.
So move cook. I said, if I have to do the first one, I think I have to do the first one.
There a second? No, sir, no, no second. Any discussion?
Uh, yeah, actually, I just want to say something that I probably should have said to especially the new members, but a reminder to the old, to the the continuing members. Eileen is a fantastic um uh source for you. You have any questions about the agenda items? Um, if you need any help contacting anybody, if you need their phone numbers, because there's a lot of us. Contact her. Um, she's fantastic to work with and uh we love her a lot. Um, so yeah, please don't hesitate to call her. Thank you.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Mrs. Engelhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Champion?
Yes.
Mr. Dasha?
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Ms. Whitesman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item twelve on our agenda is approval of our minutes from the December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting. I'll ask. Uh, for a motion in a second on the minutes and remind folks who weren't at the meeting to not vote on it.
So the twelfth of the sixth?
Thirteen.
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 So.
Thirteen. Giffen move, do we have a second?
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Stay.
Mrs. Engelhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Champion?
Abstain.
Mr. Dasha?
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Whitesman?
Yes.
Right. Thank you. Uh, item thirteen on our agenda this evening is Ben Ward Resolution PV two thousand twenty-three dash oh four. A memorializing action taken in regards to the application of Aunt Mary's dispensary LLC block forty-nine lots one, nine, ten, and eleven. Um, approval of the site plan, so that's been circulated to the board already. Um, Kara, can you remind us who is eligible to vote on this one?
Yes, Councilwoman Engelhardt, Mr. Cook, Mr. Dasha, Ms. Giffen, uh, Mr. Levitt, and Ms. Whitesman.
I get a motion in a second.
Engelhardt moves. Giffen second.
Any discussion?
Uh, the only discussion, as Susan pointed out, because I did sit through the council meeting last evening. Um, it it was the parking and and the studies that were done for the parking, and I I see it memorialized in there. How many spaces that 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 our ordinances require, how many the I T E is that?
Yes.
The transportation uh engineers uh that that they up, and they had enough for all. So at this point, so again, just like Susan said earlier, anything can change. Um, as we renew, uh uh as the council renews them, those other ordinances as well. So I just want to say that because I did see it in there and it spells it out very, very specifically.
Any other discussion?
Mrs. Engelhardt?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Whitesman?
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
I'll go again too.
Apologies.
Um, yeah. Um, item fourteen uh on the agenda this evening is the continuation of the public hearing for one sixty-one Dolce LLC. Um, folks remember that they were in for um uh public hearing back in uh. Was it the December sixth meeting? Remember that correctly? Yes, um, our December sixth meeting, they uh. I needed to continue. The only published date uh was today's date, so we needed to carry forward to a certain this date. Um, and we knew that they were not going to be here tonight. So. We've confirmed with the applicant that they're ready to go at our next meeting on the twenty-fourth.
Correct.
Okay, so we are carrying, yes.
I I did have a an email from them to um yesterday, I believe it was, that they were going to submit uh new uh materials. And they wanted to know how many copies. Um, and it might be a discussion for the board of, you know, since we do have new members, whether.
So, okay, so there's two things here. One is everyone should be getting or has already an iPad, so digital submissions is is preferred. I know we need at least some hard copies for Bob and for GPW and a few other folks. I think we were using the number five before H P one copy and.
Well, yeah, the H B C and a lot of the the um commissions have um preferred uh electronic files um to be submitted. And reviewed for the review. I know um Ken and and uh Josh would like one at least one more copy. Um, Bob, I think Jay also.
And then we need a copy for public review here.
Correct.
I would like a hard copy.
Okay.
So, one, two, let's make it, let's make it six.
Let me know um your preference as you go along as well. You might feel that there's something a little bit different that you might like.
Fair enough. Um.
And if we're. On file at least ten days before the next meeting or will be on file, they said. They, I will contact them tomorrow um to make sure that they are. Um, so if. We could make them to the announcement and if they don't get.
We'll have to carry if it's on it.
Correct.
All right, so um so so um we are going to carry this item uh to our meeting on January twenty uh fourth, two thousand twenty-three. No further notice will be given. Um, I will say for for new board members, you are absolutely eligible to participate in the discussion if you review the prior um meeting. Um, so um are, for those who don't know, our meetings are reported on on the cloud because we're using the hybrid format. You can absolutely review those meetings if you want to, if it comes, especially if we're talking about alternates, if it comes down to needing your vote, if we're, you know, then you'll need to certify that you um. Uh, review the recordings and all the materials.
Do we get that address through Eileen or is it on?
It's all on the website.
Yeah.
Yeah, we put them on the website, I think.
Put it under the YouTube and all of those.
That was a status. It was terrible. Much better, much better.
We just to clarify, since we made the distinction before between participation and voting.
Yes.
Everyone can participate in the meeting, but only obviously the nine can vote, number one, and number two, only everyone that's certified that they had listened to all the prior tapes can actually vote, right?
So it honestly, for those of you who 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 want to catch up, it was.
It's short.
It was a relatively short presentation. It was about an hour or an hour and a half. The testimony wasn't terribly too long. Um, so it should shouldn't be too onerous if you wanted to to do that. But again, you could also choose not to if you haven't. That's okay. We we have enough uh participating members, so.
And Jeff, if they, if they, if their new materials are essentially completely new, if they need to review the old meeting term, they still do, even though it all changed.
Yeah.
Yeah. And if I'm going to speak the most of the comments we made, they was going to bring around, oh, yeah.
Yeah. I would like to clarify that, um, I'm sorry, um, that that meeting was November fifteenth.
Oh, it's November fifteenth, sorry.
Yeah.
November fifteenth, we're carrying forward.
I'm going to get a few other information together.
So if you want to look at it, it's November fifteenth, sorry. Uh, um. Okay, so so there are ten days is 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 coming up, so if they don't, then we'll carry it forward, but that's um.
So twenty-fourth, same times, in location, and no further notice.
All right, this kind of has bled into chair items. Um, so fifteen on our agenda is chair items. Uh, our next meeting on January twenty-fourth, um, we will obviously, as we were just saying, we will have um Dolce intinuation of that public hearing. Um, Councilmember Engelhardt told us that we will likely have um the um. Uh, or storm weather, storm water ordinance on that council is anticipating introducing on first reading after meeting on the twenty-third.
Essentially like called a flood management.
Flood management ordinance. Sorry, flood management. All right, um, Eileen did circulate that to the board right before the meeting, so if you haven't checked your email, that is there. Um, but obviously we'll get, if there's any changes before council introduces it.
It's going to be a change. We're working on trying to get it up, be scheduled for applicants, so that. And it's worth seeing like a construction primitive.
Okay, so I'm going to ask everyone, please to keep your eye on your inbox, so that when the version that is going to get introduced is done, then everyone will be able to look at it. It is highly technical and we're going to lean on Bob. Um, for for some of that, I was just warning about uh for for that as well.
The fee schedule is not really related so much to us, but so you can read what we, what I've got in your email, but you know, if it's, the meat of it is there, it's really just the fee schedule that has to be up.
Yep, um, and let's see, with the the only other thing I want to mention under chair items, uh, for those who are new to the board, uh. There is a requirement under New Jersey law, if you're not aware of it, that you have to take a training class offered by the New Jersey planning officials on what it is to be a planning board member. Um, please, we have, we've even gotten the dates from N J P O.
No, I'll go on the roadside tomorrow and and forward that to.
I highly encourage you to not wait on doing that. Find the the most, find the one as soon as possible to to fit your schedule. It's a five-hour class. It's not meant to tax your brain. It's supposed to give you a lot of information on how to effectively uh serve on a planning board. Um, it's a good, it's a good thing that New Jersey does this.
Yeah, New Jersey P O also has one, obviously, and then I think um Rutgers has um has sent out something that the record has.
Unfortunately Rutgers.
Yeah, and and it's really, really hard to get into the Rutgers class of.
Yeah.
It's a, it's very, to be filled up a lot.
Yeah, so um, so just, so for new members, please, I'd encourage you to do that. I'm also going to echo what what Susan had said, um. Um, there are a number of us who have served on this board for a number of years. Please at reach out to us. Um, with any questions you have, do not hesitate to um to 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 to. Raise a question. There is about something that you're not clear about. Please, we want everyone to have all the information they need in order to uh effectively serve uh on the board. Um, and also, please feel free, if you're reading, say, uh Beth's report on the planning questions, send Beth an email. You're allowed to do that.
Yeah, at least email, call me, text him, have a speak with any board member.
Not just Beth, but any other Beth almost, um, uh, so that you are able to fully participate uh in 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 the stuff that's ahead of us. Is there anything else, Eileen, that we think coming up?
Yes, we have.
What is that?
That is, I have, that is this Spice Factory, V S D, Wilmington Apartments. It is a new application, uh, because it adds another lot, right, Bob? Um, so.
So it's considered a new application on an amendment to the prior approval?
They're identifying it as an amendment, but it's a um, they're many phase two of their prior, they have approval for phase one, that's on the construction, that's the current building.
Right.
Uh, the building hasn't been built yet. They're modifying it, but in order to do that, they're incorporating a different lot for additional parking.
Yeah.
So we had this discussion that it would be considered.
So, okay, so that's, so do we, so that's been submitted. Do we, do we have a date for completeness yet, or we're not?
No, we do not. Um, so that, we didn't have any dates officially approved at this point, so.
So to people who didn't hear the first part of that happens to.
No.
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 New application. There'd be a whole new application. Yeah, and even if it were an amendment to the prior application, it's the hearing that you have to listen to, not the. This particular hearing, it could be an amendment to the prior, if it goes that route, amendment to the prior people. You don't have to worry about it last week. Yeah, so everyone, before they leave, please take uh a set of plans and the materials that are one of, yeah, plans and then all the materials.
Okay, so we'll have a, thank you for calling. Uh, we will have a uh. We hopefully will have a date. Obviously, there's a lot to review, it looks like, so I doubt completeness is going to happen before February, right? I mean, is that?
Uh. Possibly the February fourteenth, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I believe it, I mean, it it's a. It's a, it's against amended application, but they're relying on a lot of some of the prior, they're republishing a lot that you had before, so it'll be.
Your view won't be that, well, the check was probably much.
Yeah, yeah. Waivers are asked for. I would assume they're very similar to waivers they asked for the last time.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Any other things out in the wind?
Yeah, I have it in everyone. Everybody's going to get mad because I'm going to, you have no more homework to do.
Sorry.
Um, Mike Champion.
Oh, yeah.
Pointed out earlier this year, um, every board member discussed their, Mike can, uh, I don't know, Mike, you want to unmute yourself and explain what needs to be done? But every board member needs to just take a few minutes to do Mike's homework.
Yes. Thanks, Susan.
You're welcome.
Every year, newly elected council people and planning board members have to watch um a training video on storm water management. It's required under our storm water permit from the D E P. So I'll circulate that through Eileen around summertime. Thank you.
If you could just read, send that to me so I can make sure I'm giving the right ones, like.
Will do. Thank you.
Do you have a list of, do they, because I know I watched it, but I don't know if I sent an email, but I did, that's.
Um, I know, you don't have a, I don't see this, I don't trend in Jim.
But did I? Same thing.
Yeah, I don't think I saw an actual email.
Right, so also there's an email.
Yeah, they're they're not, they're not terrible.
No.
But you do need, we do need everyone to to watch that. Yes, thank you.
The only other thing that um had popped up um recently, uh, we had talked about the Central Station LLC, which was the furniture, I believe that's on uh.
It's on Central Avenue, Central Station.
Central Station. Um, they have a new journey, which um and then they've contacted Bob and Beth for another um sit down with them. They already have escrow, so.
Do they need a technical review committee or no?
I think they're going to be next Thursday, this Thursday?
It is this Thursday. They haven't asked for a technical review. They've asked for a board professional discussion.
So if that, if they do need that, let us know. Again, for newer, I keep saying this, but for newer folks on the board, um, oftentimes if. Uh, we'll, we'll provide an applicant, a couple of members of our board with a couple of members, with a couple of our professionals to kind of have an informal conversation with an applicant to try to head out. Um, some. Things that we don't have to work out in the hearing, so we can get them, you know, so we can see the application process a little bit more smoothly. Um, so it's a good opportunity for folks to get involved, um, and I would encourage folks, when we have one of those to to do so. All right, anything else?
No, I think that's it.
The only thing, Jeff, if I, if if. The only thing, Jeff, if I if if I could, especially for the, we keep saying for the new board members, but there. All of our documents are on the website, but there there is the rules of citizen input.
Yes.
Our bylaws.
They're on the website too.
I know, and and the master plan, which sort of guides us uh in in all the decisions that we make. Uh, I believe those are the salient documents that most people carry, at least electronically or in a bag.
And the ordinance. And the order. Are they easy to find? Because our website is very difficult to navigate.
So here's here's what I'm, here's what I'm gonna do. Um, Eileen, can we send the full board? Just each of those documents, just email to everyone those the documents, the rules of conduct, the bylaws. The, I know we just did the single.
Yeah, but at least.
The national one, one email, um, the single, single consolidated, which includes stuff that we just updated, but also the older existing documents like H P C, they preservation and.
Yeah.
And sustainability and all that other stuff, housing, um, all of those and um. Those are something else.
We have links to the code.
And then a link to the website with the code.
Yeah.
So so the code is all digital. Um, it's. It it's easy, it's it's easier. I mean, I remember I gotta find it when you go at once, but that's.
I'm not if that's updated.
Oh, no.
That's gonna be searched and everything and all that.
Yeah, but you could.
Yeah, the the website's not bad for the for ordinance. That's actually. Alright, good. Um. The only other chair item that I've got on my mental list that I just remembered was um. The sign review committee. Um, so the um. Sign review committee provides a mechanism for applicants who just wanna get a sign approved. To not have to go through a whole site plan process. Um, sign review committee uh by ordinance is comprised of, remind me, it's. The chair of their designee, um, um. Is there someone from H P C on there? There's the director of H of the F C P. And there's, the F C P designates a person.
Yes.
Um, and then there's. Another planning board member, two other planning board members, right? Yeah, so um, last year, um, the H P C person was.
Ron.
Was.
Oh, the H P C was Wendy or.
Was Wendy, right? Um, so when I let H P C at the reorg decide who who H P C wants their person to be. Uh, last year, I designated Todd as as my, uh, to do it and just Todd wants to do it.
I'd love it.
Todd's gonna still do it. Um, if we could reach out to um. Uh, F C P and see who their person is going to be, remind you, and then we're looking for two other planning board members to be on the sign review commission, uh, committee, should be. Um, uh, to to do that, so um.
Last year, it was Trent and Hannah.
It was Trent and Hannah last year. Are there board members who would like to to do that?
I don't mind staying on it.
Do you want to do it again? I'm willing to, if nobody else wants it, I'm fine with doing it.
Same, I'm willing to stay on it too.
So you know what? I'm not gonna break up the band, so. I'm there, that's great. Okay, so really, what we're looking for, Dennis, if you could, just whoever the H P C person's gonna do next year. Um, and then um. If Todd would you want to shout? Okay, and the other committees that we had last year were um. Have all kind of been obviated, like we don't need them anymore, but the big one was the master plan, that's done and um.
Census.
Census committee that was that got that works done.
Circulation.
We had a circulation, but I kind of got rolled into other stuff. So, yeah, there's only some other committees, but if we do, we'll we'll come back to that in a future.
I think eventually do the sustainability element.
Yep.
So so committee, but we, you know.
We're not there yet.
Right now.
Yep.
I I forget, do we have a TRC committee or is it as, do you select members?
We select members based on who's interested in the application. We don't have a standing technical.
Yeah, it's like who's gonna be around to available to do this.
Around available, and quite honestly, because we're a small town, we wanna make sure that like conflicts and other stuff. Yeah. Okay, item sixteen on the agenda is.
Sure, I'm sure. It's related, so I just thought I would go in here. Um, usually we get the agendas through our email as well, like this time I was going. Doing work, it was on the website last weekend. We didn't get the agenda direct. Can we, it was, I figured it just. Be your book. I just let you check going forward. Can I check my email more than I check the website?
Because some people didn't get to take the O P, so we weren't.
I've been.
No, I'm not sure. I got the agenda, but I kind of thought that was on me.
Okay.
I also didn't get one too.
Okay.
No, I must not have done the the V C C on that. I'm looking at it right now.
We'll fix it. Next, yes. Thank you for playing that.
Thank you.
Alright, item sixteen, um, uh, need a motion, second to audit the bills.
Engelhardt moves.
Love it, so I can. I mean. Bills were circulated uh by email uh before.
Yes, they're in three different parts because some were in December, some, you know, and as I get some a little. Few more escrow checks that came in today. Um, anyway, um. Mayor Carol?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Engelhardt?
Yes.
Mister Levitt?
Yes.
Mister Champion?
Yes.
Mister Dasha?
Yes.
Mister Cook?
Yeah.
Miss Giffen?
Yeah.
Mister Hill?
Yes.
This way, Miss White.
Yes.
Alright, um, professional course, do we have any? No, no, no.
Really, Mr. Trent, I could just take a couple of minutes. Um. Just for all the new people that are here, just as a reminder to everybody else, um. As we go down to the board, I'm here to make sure that board remains free from any sort of litigation. Make sure that the application goes smoothly, make sure the hearings goes smoothly. Um, and there's just a couple of things I just wanna highlight. Um, first of all, if anyone had ever has any questions regarding any conflicts, potential conflicts, um, please call me, email me. All my information is on the list. Happy to walk you through it. There are certain requirements in certain instances where there is a definite conflict. Certain instances where there could be an appearance of a conflict. Sometimes that's tough to navigate, so any questions, please reach out. Um, to the chairs comments before with regard to respecting rights of of everybody. We we try to conduct meetings in a respectful, organized way. Um, not only for the board members, but also with the public, also with the applicant and their counsel and their experts. Um, so, you know, if we can just try to keep things as organized and again respectful of both sides as possible. That will not only make the meetings go smoothly, but will also keep us free from litigation. Because as we've seen in town, it doesn't really take much for someone to have an issue with something, so the more that we can keep things under control, the better. Um, and then that just leads into the last issue with regard to social media postings, et cetera. That goes to conflicts. We've seen also in town specifically with regard to the hotel and could be any application. Any posting could really lead to a potential conflict in either an individual's eyes, most certainly in the court's eyes. So my recommendation always to every board member is no postings, no comments, no postings, no anything. That's really the only way that we could be a hundred percent sure. That anything that's said with regard to an application or the board or an individual is not misconstrued. You may not mean it one way, somebody else may take it another way. And again, I just try to take a very conservative approach to protect you, and the only way we can do that is just. Just to stay off entirely. But any questions, I'm here, call me, email me. I'll help you through anything you need.
I think we just got the entire country to do that.
I agree, I agree, Mayor, a hundred percent.
Thank you, Tara.
And no group emails.
Oh, yeah, that's a thing, isn't it? Don't send an email. And new folks, any, if you send an email to the entire board, it is considered us having a quarrel, and we don't do that. Meetings have, all the discussion has to happen in public in the room, so. Which that's, that's just to make sure that everyone's aware of that. Um. We need to go to executive session?
Yes.
Alright, I get a motion to adjourn.
Move.
The second. Second gift in all the papers, say hi.
Hi.
Thank you all.